16:50 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, can we do roll call, please?
Fleming?
That's all right.
Here. McCambo?
Here.
Scott? Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
All right. First, tonight, we have a recipient for the Mayor's Award. We've just been really blessed to have good Mayor's Award recipients because we've got good citizens in the city of Burlington. So, tonight, I'm excited to...I know she's hiding, but she's back there somewhere. It is my pleasure, tonight, to give this Mayor's Award to Mackenzie. Be it known that on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your desire to offer random acts of kindness and your love and commitment to help your fellow man make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On November 21st, 2016, this Mayor's Award is presented to Mackenzie Wedsmaul Green. Would you come on down? Normally, when I try to get these out, people don't fight me to try to get you getting one, but you're gonna get one anyways. Can I give you one of these? And we get a picture taken with you so I can...people can act like...
Thank you. What did you do? I can't be making here.
Thank you for all that you do. You are so appreciated.
I don't do speeches. No, I'm blessed to call Burlington home. Every time I see the Great River Bridge, the H Bridge, I love to walk down to. That H is home.
Well said.
Thank you.
Amen. All right. Next, we have two tenure awards.
The first is in grateful recognition of 30 years of dedicated service to the citizens and the city of Burlington. As of November 3rd, 2016, we hereby present Stephen Hoschek, Fire Captain, with this certificate of recognition. Signed, Shane A. McCambo, Mayor. 30 years as a firefighter is a great accomplishment, in my view. So, congratulations.
30 years is a mighty long time.
Yes, please. Well, first of all, I'm very humbled for this award. To be recognized for 30 years of service is a tremendous, I guess, a thank you to my family. For 30 years of missing birthdays, holidays, and family events, very understanding. To my constituents here in the back of the room, the fire department, the brothers and sisters that I spent a third of my life with, it's been a great run. We're about three years short of 100 years with fire service with my family, starting in 1945 with my father, cousin. So, when I finish up here, we'll have over 100 years of service.
Wow.
So, it's been a tremendous blessing to work for the citizens of Burlington, and we'll continue to give 110 percent. Thank you.
Thank you.
People like you make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play, my friend. That's a fact. Mr. Fleming?
We have a certificate of recognition and grateful recognition of 30 years of dedicated service to the city of Burlington as of October 29th, 2016. We hereby present Jeffrey Brown with this certificate of recognition. Signed, Shane A. McCambo, Mayor.
Well, I appreciate that recognition. It is a long time. Sometimes it seems like it was just a short little jaunt. Sometimes it seems like it was quite the haul.
Yeah.
When I started 30 years ago, there weren't many good jobs. I had worked a few months here, a few months there, and get laid off, and I was looking for something that was a little bit more stable. And they told me I could work here as long as I wanted to, and apparently, I have. So, I got about...I got a couple of years ago, and hopefully, that'll be it. I was at Hy-Vee the other day, and there was a young woman in there that was collecting for Salvation Army, and she says, "Are they ever gonna let you out of that thing?" As I stepped out of the sweeper. And I says, "Well, yeah, I plan on getting out of it someday." She says, "I've been watching you get out of that thing since I was a little tiny girl." And I thought, "It's time." Anyway, I appreciate it, and I hope you understand, but I have a plumber waiting in my new house.
Congratulations.
Awesome. Great recipients today to get, Mackenzie Wedsmaul Green. God bless you for all that you do. Stephen Hoschek, we certainly appreciate you and all the hard work and the years of experience that you bring to the table of Burlington. Thank you so much, and Jeffrey again. Well done, tonight. We're gonna let you get on out of here if you want to go ahead and dip on out. Thank you. Next, on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda, having been discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, and if a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports on bonds. We have resolutions. The first is a resolution authorizing internal loan for cleanup and paving of former address or ransite of 1106 Washington Street. The second is a resolution authorizing internal loan for rehabilitation of widening of Division Street. The third is a resolution authorizing internal loan for rehabilitation and widening of Agency Street west of Roosevelt Avenue. The fourth is a resolution obligating funds from the Greater Burlington Partnership TIF rebate sub-fund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. The fifth is a resolution obligating funds from the Wine Guard TIF rebate sub-fund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. The sixth is a resolution approving urban and/or annual urban renewal report. The seventh is a resolution approving annual financial report. The eighth is a resolution authorizing partial release of real estate mortgage. The ninth is a resolution approving the correction to the purchase of an easement from an unaddressed lot on South 10th Street, PIN number 16-08-455-029. Fourth, the construction of storm sewer associated with the 2016 Cascade watershed sewer separation project phase two. The tenth is a resolution approving the correction to the purchase agreement for right-of-way for Roundabout. The eleventh is a resolution approving the purchase of a new fuel management system for the Public Works Building. And the twelfth is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for water quality demonstration project for green alleys in the 300 and 500 blocks of Jefferson Street. We also have a public hearings for December 5th, 2016. It is consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 159 Mechanical Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. And we also have appointments. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, sir. Flint Hills Golf Advisory Committee, Arthur Gordon; Human Rights Commission, Anton Anton Deng; Parts Advisor Committee, Lindsey Buhmeyer; and the Riverfront Advisor Committee, Nancy Kavaness. And we thank you for your service, folks.
Is there anybody that would like to have any of these items from the consent removed? I see none, council?
I don't have any. Your Honor, I move to approve all items listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda.
Second.
Kathleen, what's the vote on?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Well done. Okay, first, we have...we have a sale tonight. It's for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 503 Summer Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland?
This is the property located on the west side of Summer Street, south of Maple, south of Vine as well. It's a property required through the abandoned building program. Has been vacant for quite some time now. Interested individuals purchasing the property is a single-family home. Purchaser must ensure property receives permits and meets codes for renovation as required and makes necessary repairs prior to occupancy. Licensed electrician and plumber shall be required to inspect and sign off that such items in the property are meet or brought up to code as required. Purchaser shall pay minimum of 500 or 10% down, whichever is greater upon approval of sale with remaining amount within 30 days. Transfer by quitclaim deed. Sidewalks and parking shall be improved as necessary. Purchasers shall maintain property and yard and hold insurance on such property until approval of sale...upon approval of sale by the City Council. Work shall start within 60 days and be completed within 180 days with an extension of another 180 days granted if progress is being made. Kind of a summary sheet on the property. It is...was built in 1914, one and a half-story brick home, 1,200 square feet total living area, two-bedroom, one full bath, 45 by 120-foot lot. Does need some improvements and rehabilitation as most of the homes that the city acquires and sells do. So, the owner purchaser does...is required to receive all permits and bring it up to codes as required prior to occupancy. We do have currently three bids. DL Davis, $1,000, Transitions DMC, $500, and Charles Hester for $500.
Okay, and we have all three...all three bidders here tonight? Okay. We have an auction tonight. We've got three bids. The high bid is by Mr. Davis, $1,000 bid. This is a phenomenal home. Today, it's gonna make somebody a great, great dwelling. So, let's start the bid. We have $1,000. Do I have $1,500?
Yes.
Can you give us your...
My name is Charles Hester, and I live at 419 South Star.
Thank you, sir. $1,500? For Mr. Hester. Okay, we have a bid at $1,500. Do I...do I have $2,000? $1,500?
DL Davis, 540 South 9th Street, Burlington.
DL Davis, that's what I'm talking about. Mr. Hester?
Stay close. $25.
$25? That's what I'm talking about. $3 for Mr. Davis?
$35.
$35 for Mr. Hester? $4 for Mr. Davis?
$6.
$6 for Mr. Hester? $6 for Mr. Hester? Going once? $6 for Mr. Hester going twice? Sold to Mr. Charles Hester, 419 South Star Street. No, my friend. Thank you. For $6,000.
Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move to second, Kathleen.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve the sale of property locally known as 503 Summer Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Your Honor, I move to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 503 Summer Street, Des Moines County. The property be sold to Charles Hester, 419 South Star, and for $6,000.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
And then the resolution as amended?
As amended, thank you.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Yes. Another property sold. There's gonna be more, so come on back down. And to Mr. Hester, we...I don't know where he went, but we thank you out in the hallway. Okay. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 157 Electrical Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Mr. Tisland?
This again is following in line with our previous building code updates. This is going from the 2011 to the 2014 National Electrical Code within our Burlington City Code, so amending Chapter 157. This also, as previously discussed, electrical requirements of the International Residential Code shall apply to one and two-family dwellings unless otherwise stated within this section of code. So, there are some minor changes within this code separate from going to the 2014. One, I guess, change we discussed previously was the armored cable or different metal cable, metal conduit is allowed with the taking out of number two under 157.05. Currently, it's only allowed where it's seen as impractical because of physical or structural constraints. We're seeing that installed very effectively and want to eliminate any constraints for the use of that better-enabled development of properties. So, otherwise, it's some minor changes, and then again, going to the 2014 National Electrical Code with the residential code applying to one and two-family dwellings.
Anybody from the audience, questions or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
I'm good.
I'm good, too. Kathleen, let's take the vote.
Second.
Thank you.
Who introduced it?
I did.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
I motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 157 Electrical Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, first reading, couple more to go. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 158 Plumbing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Mr. Tisland?
This change for 158 is going from the 2012 to the 2015 addition of the Uniform Plumbing Code. Again, the International Residential Code under Chapter 154 shall apply to one and two-family dwelling units for plumbing requirements unless otherwise stated herein. Also, some minor changes, just wording that coincide with the update of the code from 2012 to 2015 throughout the section. Also, just under 158.06, water meters are required for connection to public water systems for buildings connected, and that is controlled by the Burlington Water Works and under their purview and regulations. Otherwise, just minor changes and primarily going from the 2012 to the 2015 addition of the plumbing code.
Okay, getting her updated. Anybody from the audience, any concerns on plumbing? Okay, counsel?
None.
Not here. I assume, Eric, that all these changes we make, they get communicated to the relevant businesses, et cetera?
Yeah, it's something through our process. We update on our website what codes were under. There's a list of codes under our chapter, and then kind of try and communicate the best we can, but...
I had a feeling I knew that answer, but...
All right.
I move to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
I move for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 158 Plumbing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved to second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Well done. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 170 Zoning Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
This is...there's three changes within two of the zoning code, first one being non-conforming structures, and then looking at zero lot line standards. The first code change is non-conforming structures. This was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission 4 to 0. All these changes were seen as an appropriate modification of the zoning code for efficient and appropriate development of neighborhoods and land in Burlington, particularly for redevelopment of infillots and continued use of existing structures. The non-conforming section applies in a couple of different manners for accessory structures that are located too close to a property line, primarily a side property line. They currently can't be rebuilt unless they are moved to meet our zoning code, which sometimes isn't practical or available. The variance process doesn't really allow that based on code and law. But if they can acquire a maintenance easement agreement from adjacent property owner in order to maintain the building, as well as get a conditional use permit through the zoning board adjustment, they are able to rebuild at their current location, including setback. This does also apply to single-family homes. As one question at our work session, I know we've had some different instances in the past where it hasn't been allowed to be rebuilt, but this would allow it to be rebuilt if they get that maintenance agreement on side property lines, and then based on setback to the front and rear property line being a street or alley that would allow them to be rebuilt. Something looking at what other communities do, especially for single-family homes, it's very similar to that. So, it is a change in what has occurred in Burlington from the past where we didn't allow rebuild if they did not meet certain setbacks, but this change would allow it and is consistent with some other communities. We have had a lot of talking about where it's kind of come up, a lot of the North Hill area, South Hill area. We have a lot of older, larger homes that are built too close to the front and rear property line where it's difficult to get insurance or impractical or not able to rebuild if there is a fire that destroys over 60% of the assessed value. And oftentimes, the assessed value and the rebuild value are very different, so a minor fire could preclude them from rebuilding. So, looking at single-family homes, allowing those to be rebuilt through this process. And then multifamily structures that are in a historic district, it would apply as well. So, primarily, just to single-family homes and accessory structures, but also multifamily structures in a designated historic district, which currently is just the Heritage Hill Historic District that we have.
I think that's an important distinction to make in that district.
Yeah, otherwise, multifamily has to meet current code setbacks and everything else. Second change was zero lot line standards. We've had more requests for this typically in the past. It'd been through a condo where one structure with two units was on one lot. The trend going, I guess, in recent past has been for wanting that duplex structure for each half to be on its own individual lot where you own the lot and half the structure, not just common interest in a larger lot. So, this provides for that, providing the minimum width of inside yard setbacks for attached structures, not just detached structures. And then where they have the common wall, there's a zero setback, so they share a common property line. The third one was in...so, that applies to R2, R3, and R4 districts. And R1 districts, still wanted to go through the PUD process, have a little more review because it is a more restrictive zoning district, but going through the PUD process as we have in the past for R1 districts and looking at adjacent property uses and landscape buffers in those instances, so... Any questions on any of those?
Any from the audience? Any questions or concerns? You all have been lovely tonight. Loving it. Counsel?
It's a good move. I like it.
I move to close.
Second.
Moved to second.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving... Oh, she has to do them...
Yeah, I've got one more thing.
Darn.
Sorry, usually, it's me.
Yeah. I motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 170 Zoning Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved to second, Kathleen.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the final plat of Gillette Farm subdivision.
Second.
I think Jim beat you. Mr. Tisland?
This is a one-lot subdivision, approximately two acres in size, located southeast of the airport with access coming off of Roosevelt Avenue, so not quite contiguous to most of the development in the community, but separating the homestead from the remaining lot and farm there. Just for reference words, located Roosevelt Avenue to the west, the airport to the northeast, located here off of Hunt Road with the remaining farm to be separated out from the house. So, one-lot subdivision separating the house from the remaining property. It is one of the last properties in this area in the city with the city limits just coming to the south and west of it.
Any questions from the audience? I see none, counsel?
No.
I think it's a good deal. All right. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, good deal. What we got next? Counselor?
I have a resolution approving maintenance and operation of public infrastructure for Westbrook Estates Phase 2.
Mr. McGregor? Thank you. Mr. McGregor?
Good evening. Before, is a resolution to approve the acceptance of public infrastructure in Westbrook Meadows, which is just off of Gier Avenue. There is a correction from the original resolution that was submitted prior for the work session with the addition of sanitary sewer. The sanitary sewer is a short stent within city limits, but ultimately, service is provided by West Burlington Sanitary Sewer System, but we accept the stuff within our city limits. So, we've inspected, everything is good, so recommend approval.
Thank you. Nick, where'd we find you?
From glorious Nebraska.
You could've let the glorious out, but anyways, welcome to a good state. Counsel...yeah, counsel? Anybody from the audience, questions or concerns?
Besides accepting the glorious stuff, we...
Glorious.
We'll have an amendment to our 28E agreement with the city of West Burlington as a result of this subdivision addition.
Okay.
It's over the next couple of meetings to deal with.
Okay. Okay. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to enter into agreement with Impact 7G Inc. related to a U.S. Environmental Protection Agency grant award for brownfield assessments and related services.
Second.
We went through RFQ process, I believe we had six, exact six submittals for this to provide services for a brownfield assessment grant that the city received. We have $400,000 through that grant to conduct assessments in the downtown area, including Phase 1 and Phase 2s, as well as doing cleanup and area-wide planning, community outreach, and then some training and conference attendance by staff as well. Mike Fisher here with Impact 7G, maybe want to speak a little bit about the process, but hoping to identify some properties in the downtown area and go through this process and then possibly leverage additional funds down the road for additional cleanups.
Thanks, Eric. I'm Mike Fisher, Impact 7G, out of Clive, Iowa. Now we just moved from Johnston to Clive. We've been doing some work here in Burlington on the Dress Around as well and are seeing some real progress out there. First and foremost, this is an economic redevelopment initiative on the part of the Environmental Protection Agency. It's really a strong bipartisan initiative to improve communities, to redevelop areas that would otherwise not get redeveloped over a long period of time. So what the intent of this grant money is, is to really put some focus on some areas that have some, possibly some environmental constraints that are preventing their redevelopment. Let's get over that hurdle and get these sites redeveloped to improve tax base and jobs. So it helps the environment, it helps the community financially, and overall, what it does is establish momentum for neighboring project, neighboring properties to improve and redevelop as well. So it's a great initiative. I've been working it since 1998 when I was involved in the EPA Pilot Program and received an award from EPA for our initiative here in Iowa to really spur this program nationwide. So it has gotten very competitive, and I want to applaud the city staff on achieving this grant award. It's not easy to obtain anymore, and so these are good federal dollars that we're bringing in to improve the community. So it's a great thing going forward.
Thanks for sharing about the hard work from the staff.
Thank you.
That's appreciated. You know, people see these dollars coming in and out, and a lot of hard work goes.
Yeah, this is all federal money, and like Eric said, now it gives us to build it. What we've been able to do in other communities is just by being aware of other agencies' funding to get these properties over some hurdles, to get businesses in there and building, creating those both temporary jobs as well as long-term jobs and tax base. We can leverage this money to garnish additional attention to Burlington, garnish additional attention to gain other funding sources, including any follow-up money from EPA if we have to do cleanup activity like we did at Dress Around. So a great opportunity here, so excited going forward.
Great.
Thank you.
Impact 7G. All right. Everybody's good? Again, thank you, Mike.
Any comments, mailings?
Oh, thank you, my friend. Any comments, questions, concerns from the audience? Yes, sir?
Craig Fenton, 2602 Park Place, Transition DMC 515 South Main. As you saw earlier tonight, or heard earlier tonight, we had intended to build a property that came up tonight well beyond our price range, and actually, when we put in the bid, we did not.
Does this have, does this have to do with the Impact 7G, or is this?
Oh, is this on the Impact 7G?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I thought you said, I'm sorry. I saw the next thing down.
Okay. It's all right.
Hang on, hang on. Just a couple of minutes.
Actually, could we have some drums down there?
Okay, on the, on the resolution number three, any comments or concerns from the audience? Okay. We're good.
Thank you, brother.
Are we good? Kathleen, let's vote.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, now.
Don't come on. Right? Yes, sir.
Actually, as I just said, we have some solvent and stuff on the property, might be able to use that because we got to get rid of it. Anyway, Transition DMC, been going around, we've been around since January of last year. We just finished our roofing project, added a $1,2800 roof, rubber roof to the building that was donated by Marlene Raid. It's going to be our first name gift. We will be seeking permits from here on out to.
The roof is already on?
It's on.
All right.
It's done. So we will be seeking permits for the internal structure to be started now with bathrooms and we'll be building that out for our homeless shelter. We are expanding our community board. We've added DHS, Domestic Violence Shelter to the board, would offer the city, if they are a staff member that wanted to be involved or could be involved, to be working with us on the project. Little bit of stats about us, since we started, we've done 145 intakes from citizens in Burlington households. That added out to 32 people, our households that we've left in their homes or kept or put them in new homes. We've added furniture to them. We've collected furniture from the citizens, given them back out to them for free, and we're really having a very good turnout on that. A couple of hotels have given us their excess stuff that they're in the process of turning We've added Laura, who'll talk here in a second, I hope, about to help us with grants. Brian Anderson, Art Gordon, both are developers in town that are helping us with the property things. When we originally put in the bid, we were thinking we would try to do it by trial and error. We now have a couple of partners that are really willing to help us step up and change the way we're looking at them so that when bids come in the future, we know exactly where the property is going to move forward to. We are looking, at some point, we would be able to apply for an economic development grant. We're on the corner of the southeast area, corner of the economic development area in Burlington. Our lot's actually the last lot on that, on that economic development zone. And if we could get a HUD grant, there is one available, would be $250,000, or that's it, would be $800,000. We would require, we're still trying to find $250,000 matching, but if we can find that, we'd be coming back to the city to ask for your blessing because that is a grant that has to be provided through the city. We have a house that was developed or donated to us at 417 Summer. We sold that out for $6,500 plus the liens to Art Gordon. He's in the process. I see today his trucks are there and they're actually in there rehabbing that house. So whoever got the house tonight got a good deal because there's a lot of redevelopment of the houses right there in that area. We estimate when we're fully operational, we'll be offering City of Burlington 15 to 20 new jobs. And as I said, we're on the corner of that economic development zone. Don't have any specific requests, but other than to let you know where we're at, but we really would appreciate it if the City of Burlington would take note of what we've done without asking for anybody's help. And if there are times when you can offer us financial assistance or some other type of assistance, we would appreciate anything that we can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work, Craig.
Thank you.
Please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council of Burlington. My name is Laura Leges. I am a consultant and owner of Municipal Connections, and my address is 1221 Glenwood Lane in Muscatine, Iowa. And I have gotten to work with Craig and his volunteers and his organization since September, this past September, I came on board with him. And they have went outside to seek some consulting work and looking for grants and funding options because they have a dream. And you heard Craig's dream, and his dream is to provide, along with the organization, it's an organizational dream, to provide a place for people to go when they are in need. And my interactions with Craig and his organization, the Transitions Organization, in the last few months, I have seen numerous things happen that maybe perhaps your common citizen is not seeing happen, but there are people who maybe could afford finally to get a home, afford to finally get an apartment, did not have furniture, and Craig, they have been able to provide that, helped many people, as Craig said. So I'm going to give you a little business update on behalf of Transitions DMC. And with that, since the end of September, an APT grant was applied for. At this point, we do not know where, exactly where we are on funding on all these, but this, I feel it's important for the community to know they're out there searching for their funding to try to make this happen. An APT grant, which is used for training on data collection software, Transitions DMC has a contract with the State of Iowa to utilize the software that is used among a network of services in the state of Iowa for tracking, for data collection, to know what services are being met, what services they have done, and the interaction in the state of Iowa. This is a formal contract. I commend them for that because that is making sure that they are utilizing their services correctly in the future. This grant would allow for them to get adequate training for that program that has been applied for. We have gone to several local large industries and asked for, and private foundations and community groups, and have asked for approximately about $50,000 in donations. We are not sure where we are on those yet. We're still in some conversations, which is very positive for this group. The CCHD Catholic Campaign for Human Development, the pre-application was submitted. This is a grant that is done through the Catholic Church Diocese. We should know yet this week if Transition DMC is in the running for the second part of the grant, which would allow for $75,000, and potential for them to receive funding, continue receiving funding, additional grants for the next five to six years. So we're very excited to hear that. We have also, we're actually in the middle of, almost finished with, the HUD grant, which is Homeless Youth Demonstration Grant. And this is a nationwide grant that we're applying for to help with development of reaching out for the ages, mainly between the ages of 15 to 24-year-olds, which seem to be statistically a situation where we have that age out on the street, and we're trying to combat that. And so at this point in time, that is where they're at. We have some public relation out there going. In a week from tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow's Tuesday, today's only Monday, right? A week from tomorrow is Giving Tuesday. Transitions DMC is a part of the nationwide Giving Tuesday campaign. Their story is published on their website, and you can read more about that if you were to go onto that site.
What week, what day?
It is Giving Tuesday, and it's a nationwide campaign, which encourages everyone, you know, once you get done with Black Friday, for shopping and Small Business Saturday and Cyber Monday, we have Giving Tuesday. And Giving Tuesday is where the encouraging of U.S. citizens to give to charity groups, give to the National Giving Day. And so we are part of that, Transition is. And also, we have been working on doing a storytelling, because everybody has a story, of what has Transitions done. And if you go out on their social media outlets, you can find stories about people who have been helped, people who work at Transitions, they're volunteers, and how they're making a difference every day. So that's a little business update on their behalf, and thank you very much for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the update, and thank you for coming down from Muscatine?
Yes, Muscatine.
I'm sure you love it here. I'm just glad.
Actually, I enjoy your little downtown area. I have shopped a few times.
Did you? All right. We'll come back and shop anytime. Any other comments from the audience? It's just been wonderful tonight. Okay, we appreciate you. Mr. Tisland, any closeouts besides the fact that your razor's broken?
No. I have one input here. We're looking to do, we have some community credit, remaining landfill credits, we're looking to do a free community cleanup on Friday, December 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So City of Burlington residents can bring their trash and spring cleanup items to the parking lot south of the Memorial Auditorium during the hours 9:00 to 2:00. Bring your Burlington Municipal Water Works bill to prove your residency along with your driver's license. This does not accept, same as other cleanups, batteries, tires, demo material appliances, electronics, TV and computers, so primarily household items and trash items. There'll be dumpster containers available to dispose of the trash and items. The person bringing the items down will be required to unload their own trash and items. There will not be assistance on that end, so they need to be able to unload what they're bringing down. And again, not a City of Burlington residence or cannot prove residency or your water bill and you not be allowed to dump out the site. It's for the City of Burlington residents only. If you have any questions, you can contact the Development Department, 753-8131, but it is a one-time thing using the remaining credits that we have, trying to help out some people that maybe have some excess stuff before beginning winter, so.
Good idea, Eric.
It's going to be excellent. I've got a lot of things I need to utilize. Kathleen? Counselor?
Yes, all kinds of stuff happening this week and weekend.
Tell us about it.
Thanksgiving, obviously. On Thanksgiving, there is a fundraiser at the Burlington Golf Club. It's a 5K run-walk, and that raises money for the community dinner, Thanksgiving dinner. Starts at 8:45, so get in the run before you eat your weight in turkey. And.
Some of us get to eat more than others.
Friday, there is a book sale, Black Friday book sale at the library, 9:00 to 4:00, and then again on Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. And then Saturday is Small Business Saturday, so just kind of reminding everyone to get out there and support the small businesses around town. And then we have the Lighted Holiday Parade on November 26th at 5:00 p.m.
I'm going to skip to you. I'm still looking for an email with names.
You want to go with the chief?
Yes, yes, I want to go with the chief.
Thank you. Just two really quick things. One was the update to the recreational burning ordinance. So we needed to bring forward the update to the city's fire prevention code anyway. So we're going to update from the 2012 to the 2015, and included in that is recreational burning. So you'll see that the first time on December 19th, included in the update to the code. And the second thing was, we have our Your Numbers Up program, just getting ramped up to start here. We put out a press release on Friday, I believe. It was in, I think it was, I know it was on the radio, I think it was in the Hawkeye as well. I've heard a lot of people talking about it. So this is the third time since I've been on the Fire Department that we've had a program called Your Numbers Up. This is the, it's a little different, pretty much kind of the same type of thing, though we're checking for address numbers. So if people would be so kind as to check and make sure they have theirs, it would save us a lot of time. But kind of the basic outline of the program is our, we have the town divided up into sections, and each shift has a section to cover. They're going to go through the neighborhoods, make sure the proper numbers are on the houses. If the number's not up there, they're going to hang one of these old door tags up, just a friendly reminder from the Fire Department. It's got the code on one side, a friendly reminder on the other. And we'll do that between now and the end of the year, and then after February. February 15th. 1st or so, we're going to go back and do rechecks and make a list of whoever's not compliant. Hopefully, there's nobody on the, on that list. So we did go check the places you would think you would buy numbers, True Value, Menards, Lowe's, I'm sure other stores would have them as well, and they all are well-stocked on the four-inch numbers. And that's something I've heard people talk about, "I only have three-inch numbers." We're not coming out with a tape measure to measure numbers. If they have numbers that we can read from the street, they're, they're good to go. All we would ask is if you replace your numbers, or you don't have any, then just put the four-inch numbers up there. A lot easier to see from the street, so. It's very important, and it's a good opportunity for our crews to go out and go through some neighborhoods that we don't go to a lot. So they're using it as a street familiarization type of training, so.
Good idea.
I think it'll be good for the guys to do that, so. If you have any questions, there's the guy behind the program, right back there, Battalion Chief Bruce Workman, so he's put a lot of time and effort into organizing this, so.
Good job, Bruce.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you find Richard?
Yeah, I did. Thursday, Thanksgiving at BHS, if you don't have anything going, or you don't have a place to, place to eat, you can eat there, and it's a good time, a lot of good fellowship. Also, I want to thank Barbara Krieger, and... Okay, I want to thank Barbara Krieger, and I can't remember the other teacher's name.
Stephanie Carnes.
Thank you for the inviting me to the American Studies. They, they did something on American justice today. The kids did a fantastic job. Everybody, except for the guy in the corner that didn't have his stuff prepared, maybe he'll be better next time. But anyways, that was a good day today. I don't even know how to say this or bring this up, and I probably shouldn't, but I will anyways, because I... Somebody asked me today, they said, "Well, how come you haven't said anything about crime in the, in the city?" And, you know, my statement was, "Well, what do you have me to say about it?" I mean, nobody's happy about hearing that there's a shooting in Burlington, or something to that effect, but I, I want to say this, that we're, there's nobody in the city that is happy about what's going on in the city whenever there's crime. And I, I don't know what to do. You know, I, I had a little kid to ask me, "What are you going to do? What are you guys going to do about all the, all the shooting?" I'll be honest with you, I really don't know what to do. I have no clue what to do. I, I mean, I'm almost to the point where it's like, do we offer a $1,000 reward on violent crimes, you know, so that if, if we, if somebody gives us, gives us a name or information that leads to the arrest of somebody of a violent crime, that we'll give them some money? I say let's put money in their pockets. I want it stopped. You know, how do we need to proceed on this? What do we need to do? But to me, if, if we can start by doing something like that, or, I don't know, having a mayor's hotline, are you afraid to talk to somebody? Talk to me. I, I don't know what else to say, but it's got to come to a stop. This is, this is such a great community, and we're letting a few people just, just ramrod through this community. It's got to stop, and we need the, we need the neighborhoods to help us do this. We really do. But, but I'm, I'm serious. I'm, I'm, I'm to the point that I, I would be willing to say, "Let's offer rewards if somebody's going to come clean. Help us, help us rid this community of this, of this violence." It's, it's a, I don't know what else to do, but that's, that's where I am. So if somebody said, "How come the mayor never says anything about it?", I said something tonight, I, but I don't know what the answer is. I don't know. I just know that we need some help. Mayor Proton.
Happy Thanksgiving, folks.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
We do have a program, it's called Crime Stoppers. We do offer up to $1,000 reward, and have paid out this last year. I'm on the board, so that's anonymous. People can text a tip, they can, we have a Facebook page, and they can call in and...
Can, can you bring me some information back on the Crime Stoppers?
Sure, it's on our website, and we can, we can share the information too, but...
I would, I would just like to reinforce that, and maybe, maybe people would get the message and, and, and get that information, really take it for what it is, but we do, we need help from the community. And, and communities that, that rid their, that rid their neighborhoods of crime, they're helping, they're getting involved, they're keeping their eyes open, and they're calling the police. We need to do the same. We need to do the same. So bring that information back. Mr. Fleming? I'm sorry, Mayor Proton?
We're done.
Okay. Mr. Fleming?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, Counselor. City Manager?
Police Chief, you had something to say about?
Well, first and foremost, our new officer made it back to town. She's currently a little bit tense, we'll say it that way, so we're going to let her adjust to her new environment before we really, she'll be working with Officer Smith for the next few months, but our public presentations will probably start after January 1st in all seriousness. I mean, she's, this is a whole new environment. I mean, this dog has just been surrounded by other dogs in training her whole entire life, and so now, all of a sudden, it's, what's this about? You know, she's beautiful, she's about a little less than two years old, it's a female German Shepherd, and she's just beautiful, and I can't wait to kind of let the people meet her and get to know her, but things are a little bit tense with that.
When she's ready, I'd like to see her here.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll bring her in, and I had made a comment to Officer Smith, "I'd like to see her in my office."
I want to see her about y'all.
"Could you just give me a few days?", and I said, "Yeah, sure."
We understand.
Yeah, we're going through that adjustment period, but yeah, absolutely, we're so excited to bring her to town, and I think that, that she's, she's going to help in certain ways, in certain ways. I, I do think there's some illegal drug activity that she can help with as far as some of the transportation routes, and the modes of transportation and those things. But to just briefly address, you know, some of the, the issues the mayor brings up, I mean, you, you have brought up the million-dollar question. I mean, if you had the answers, or if I had the answers, or if the police chief of Chicago-Lincoln had the answers, it'd be taken care of, if you will. But we have become a very violent society, a society that has no value on human life, and to try to communicate any message is just next to impossible. I mean, there, there's avenues for people to provide information, and they know those avenues, but you have to remember that we're dealing with a culture that if you provide that information, it becomes extremely difficult for you to survive in the culture in which you, you live and that you're part of. And so, so that's a difficult, difficult situation for, for that aspect of it. You know, you have to remember, we live three, a little lower, three and a half, four hours from the most violent city in the world. I mean, I just got to check in again today, and Chicago-Lincoln has had more homicides than LA and New York put together. I mean, they're, they're dying over there every day. And so, you know, I can guarantee you this much, this recent influx, this comes up constantly now. You know, Chicago this, Chicago that, and people can say, "Yeah, but that's been going on for 10 years." Well, it has, but not to the point now. We're dealing with a, an element here that is extremely transient. I mean, we're here two or three days, we're gone. We're here two or three days, we're gone. You know, when I was a patrolman on the streets, if somebody said, "Hey, who's driving that black Trailblazer?", you know, every patrolman on the department would know. But when I come into work on Monday morning or late Friday night after one of these incidents, and they're like, "Man, chief, I stopped a car, and I have six people I've never heard of before, and there's six more I've never heard of before." And that, that, everything has changed. I mean, and it's not just Burlington, Iowa. Don't think that for a second. I mean, Mason City just had a double homicide last weekend. Muscatine's asking us for their help, they just had a drive-by shooting, 20 rounds into a house. I mean, it's, it's just, it's a situation that's extremely difficult for law enforcement to deal with. I mean, over the weekend, I'm sure you saw the news, five more officers ambushed and killed. I mean, it's, it's become a, certain segments of society, anyway, there is no value on human life, none. And if you were to interview or talk with some of these people that we're having to interview and talk with, you would instantly know exactly what I'm trying to articulate to you. I mean, it, it is irrelevant to them, whether they live today, tomorrow, or the next week for that matter. So, you know, we're doing our, our very best with what we have. We're overwhelmed, you know, three investigators trying to keep up with this, you know, we'll get some help. What we do, I mean, we have the DCI in here. Last Friday night, when all that was going on, I had the Iowa State Patrol in town. I mean, we're grabbing every resource we can grab. So, you know, I mean, I wish I could sit up here like you're saying and have the magical answer, and I don't have it for you. I don't, but I don't think anybody does. I think that this is something that's going to take time. It's, I mean, we got to somehow get to the, the younger generation, and if that's after-school programming, the PIS program, I mean, it's got to start, it's got to start somewhere at a level I don't think that's, that's ever been tried before. And so we have to have some type of prevention efforts, and right now, we're pouring all of ours into the children of this community, hoping that there'll come a day that that's unacceptable behavior. But it's extremely difficult to reach this 18 to 24. I mean, and I think, as a matter of fact, you talked about a grant for that age group of people, and, and that's exactly right. I mean, it's an age group that's just very, very difficult to reach at best. I mean, Mr. Frenos is supportive enough to this stuff, I mean, he'll even come out and talk to us, and, and he, he fully realizes what's, what's going on and what we're up against here. But I truly believe the guy we just arrested, you know, is clearly involved in, in more than one of these incidents, at least in our opinion, or the facts that we've gathered from some of these scenes, so, you know, will that have an impact? We're sure hoping so, but, you know, I can't stand up here and say that that's it, because it's not. I mean, it's coming from every different angle, every different angle, so.
I just want to reiterate again, or, well, I want to reiterate, it's, it's, I, I run into people and they say, "Well, this, we heard about, the police are looking for this, this person, or somebody for this crime. Well, this is who did it." Well, you know what, you just can't arrest somebody because somebody in the neighborhood says, "This is who did it." We, we need more than that. And the thing is, if you want to be, if you want to do your civic duty, if you, if you really care about your community, you'll, you'll do more than that. We, we've got, we've got cell phones and stuff now, people, people are always getting in trouble, you know what I'm saying? "We caught this person in an alley, you know, at 3:35 in the morning." Well, you know, I'm, I'm telling you, we just need to be more involved, and I'm not asking for citizens to be the police, but just be more involved in your neighborhood, you know, just, just keep your eyes open, and, and if there's, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, we just use the, use that phone number, call that phone number.
And there's just one other thing I want to mention, we put it out to the staff today, and for the very most part, the night shift, we try to get two cars on every traffic stop as much as we can, we try to do that, but, you know, we put it out as a directive, so, I mean, I'm going to ask the community now, if you have a low priority call, it might take us a little bit longer to get there, because if we're going to stop a car, I want somebody else to drop what they're doing and at least be there. And it's not so much for the offender, but in recent light of all the ambushes, maybe we can, we can help some of that through just a little bit of ambush awareness, you know, so, you know, if you, if, if you get stopped and another patrol car shows up, don't take offense to it. It's not that we're trying to make it seem like you're the world's worst offender because you were on your way to work and you were speeding, but it's more so to try to, try to protect the officers that are out there trying to do their job, so.
I think in light of what's been going on in the country, people ought to be able to understand that. If they don't, well, you know, it is what it is, but thank, thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You're doing a great job. Thank you, chief. And I, I guess my comment on that would be, those of you in the community that know how to pray, this is the time to do it for those guys, and for all our ladies and men who are out there putting their lives on the line. And I believe, truly, I should believe that's a big part of the answer.
Anything else from City Manager?
I've been, as the chief mentioned, I've gone out to a couple of the scenes. I feel a little out of place getting in the middle of what they're trying to get done, but I can also feel the tension that they're, they go through with the work that they're doing, and some of the frustration too, knowing that you can't always, you can't just come up with a magic wand and solve it, and they'd like to. And a lot of that, some of, well, a couple of things that, that he mentioned, that was mentioned by the chief too. The after-school program is one thing that, that our department has been very involved with. Major Grimshaw has led, really put a lot of time and effort into, I think personally, to, to make sure that, that, that can be a successful program. They received a two-year extension?
Yeah, they just got that notice today.
Got the notice on that today, so, and that really speaks to the success of what they're doing there, and I think the, really the need that's, that's there. They're also in the process of looking to extend that program. I don't know exactly what they're looking to do, I don't know if you happen to know, chief?
Just to, to then get the grant, another 21st century grant after the extension program. I mean, they're reapplying now.
So they're going to, they're in the process of applying for, for, after that extension would expire, to try to continue that into the future. Those are some things that, I know that as they talk about the importance of it, the department sees it. We, we need relationships built. And I, I was listening to a talk show last week, and talk shows are worth what a dime a dozen. One of, one of the points that was made was that just by looking at what somebody spends their money on, what stores they're shopping on, what's on their shopping list, you can, they can identify voting patterns, major belief systems. The point that, that they were trying to get at is that we have become such a segregated society in different groups. Everything that we do that separates us from looking at ourselves as a community, as a cohesive whole, damages our long-term relationships as people.
Yeah, that's true.
And as a country. And we have to find ways to mend those fences. Our national politics don't help, but they're really a reflection of what we are as a people. And we can't blame national politics. We can't blame media or anyone else that gets part of the blame from that. It all starts from individual efforts made on an everyday basis to work together. And we might, we can't, no one can solve anything on their own, but they can certainly, each of us can individually make sure that we are trying our best not to be part of the problem. So I'll get off my soapbox. Thanksgiving dinner has already been mentioned, that's 11:30 to 2:00 on Thursday. Community Action has been doing that for 19 years, I want to say. Anyone who's interested in attending is certainly welcome, and they would certainly also be enthused to see people who are willing to help with serving the meal, delivering meals, providing additional food, yet.
Or walk around and wear a turkey hat?
Well, that role's already taken. That can either be done by making contact with Community Action, I know the library also has a major role in trying to coordinate some of those activities too. So please, if you can be a part of it, make sure that you take the efforts to do that. One of the things that we also talked about, we're still in, talking with the attorney about what a potential next steps would be in regards to the conversation we had with the, is it White Horse Lounge? Is that right? So as we get some responses back on what are, really our options are, we'll just keep you up to date as to where that conversation is headed. In the meantime, I know the police department has had continued discussions with the owner there, and is trying to, they're trying to work as much as they can with them to just work through issues, and this was a lot quieter weekend. Public Works Department has been awful busy. Nick has put forward a lot of effort into several different pieces that are all moving at the same time. We did, you did RFQs with engineering firms for the Masl project, CSO work, Market Angular, South Locust, that basin, for doing the combined sewer separation work in that area. We started with, I think, five firms, then interviewed four, four of them, and are in the process of get, trying to get some additional information from two, two of them as we make a final decision. And we've got moving parts there. We had also a meeting with a, a phone conference call with the Environmental Protection Agency. We're one of five communities that they're doing some beta testing on a stormwater toolkit that they're doing. Well, for us, it's about integrated planning. How do we address stormwater issues along with everything, every other critical issue we have within our sewer department? If we're going to do that, we have to make sure that we have whatever engineering firm that we're working with on the Masl be able to work it within the timeframe that we're trying to work with the EPA. The EPA is looking to have one contractor perform the engineering work for all five communities. Whenever they do get started, they're hopeful of hitting a 12-month timeline for putting together a plan. We have to make sure that we keep our priorities up there, not make it about the EPA's priorities, but make sure that we keep ours within that. And as, to do that, and to do that fairly, for us to talk about integrated planning, well, what does that mean? We, we want to make sure that all the issues around this, this clean water are addressed. That may, means that we... That may, means that we wanna make sure that our sanitary, the, the combined sanitary sewer system, uh, what we're, the mandates that we're trying to deal with are dra- are addressed. But we also wanna make sure that we're addressing the plant issues, whether it's the nitrate and phosphates mandates that may be coming down with us over the next few years, uh, that, uh, we're taking care of our, um, aging infrastructure, making sure that we're adequately taking care of that. But also, where do we have system issues? We've been talking about the, the need to do some stormwater planning. Well, if we're gonna have an integrated plan at the EPA level, and that makes sure that it incorporates everything we're doing, we need to have, this, the idea of stormwater planning is looking at where do we have weaknesses in our community for our existing system? Where do we have bottlenecks? Um, where do we have major capital improvements that need to be made? But also, where's the growth potentially gonna occur over time? And how are we best set up to address that? So we, we wanna make sure that those issues are considered along with, uh, our sewer mandates, our stormwater mandates, to make sure that we're doing all of them. We can't do all of them at once. We, we know we can't, well, I don't think we can afford to do our CSO order by the timeline that's being set for us with the DNR, and we're gonna likely need to get a, a time extension. Our goal is ultimately gonna be to, how do we make all these other priorities fit within one overall plan? And have buy-in from both the EPA and the DNR that this makes sense, the timing that we're looking to do things, as we go about an extension. So, uh, that all being said, uh, Nick's area is gonna be under probably a lot of stress to make sure that all of those things get done and coordinated well. It helps that we have, uh, two new folks in the engineering department, um, but they have to get up to speed, and they have to help coordinate all of this.
Does flood mitigation get into this process?
Flood mitigation does, and we have the funding for the portion that we, we have in place.
Right.
They're interrelated in, in a couple of ways. One, the CSO work that we're doing counts as our match on the flood mitigation. Uh, the flood mitigation efforts, some of the things that they're doing, there's a couple of, um, doggone it, if you put the flood wall in, you have to put in the- The, down by the, we have to put in the pumping stations. Well, part of pumping over, if, if you're gonna have a wet, a rain event down in the, at the time of a flood, well, now you have water in the system that you have to get to the river.
Right.
So you need, uh, more, more pumping to get it, to pump it across and into the river and get, get rid of that. Well, as they're doing the design work for that in the downtown area, they're, uh, looking at how do we work with the existing lift station, what modifications need to be done there? Uh, what modifications need to be done with our sewer system in the downtown area to try to find an alternative route for where that's gonna go, and, and capture it in a different way so that it's not backing up. So, they're already planning some of those efforts, and we need to make sure that they get combined in with the thoughts that are going on with, uh, the contractor who's doing the Masl, or the engineering firm doing the Masl, and, and the other things that are part of our overall efforts. So, yeah, it, it does tie into it, but the funding for it is a separate pie. But they are interconnected. Along with that, uh, we're looking to do a rate study on our sewer system. Uh, right now, the Water Department is in, in the middle of looking at do, at, at their rates, and making sure that they have those done in an appropriate manner. They haven't received really information back yet from the engineering firm, but they will, over the course of the next few months, be making some decisions about what changes, if any, do they need to make with their rate system. Well, it, given that our rate system is set up off of the same model, it would make sense that this would be the time that we would take a look at ours as well. And some of that will be looking at, uh, how, what's our, what's our breakdown of rates between the sewer system and the stormwater utility fee that we charge? Do, do we have the appropriate breakdown of rates? Uh, should we look at making some shifts there, uh, modifying the structure of how we do collect rates? So, we'll be looking to tag off of the work that the Water Department is doing. It makes sense to use the same on that one, to look at bringing forward a contract with the same engineering firm that's doing that rate, it's great study to do ours. As we, you know, we had the kickoff, Public Works, too, had your kickoff meeting for Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, um, with the engineering firm for design work. I think that's moving forward okay, Nick?
Yep.
So, but the problem is, is it's moving forward with everything else that's, that's on the table. So, uh, there's a lot of work going through there, and I think that we may end up bringing forward a contract on Central Street Bridge to do an evaluation on that?
Yes.
You wanna come forward? I should've had you come forward and do some of the talking, but-
Um, since Central Street Bridge has been up, there's been some noticed deterioration, um, mostly in the wing walls that support, um, the dirt that holds that up. And, uh, we've had the Stanley Consultants who's doing the work on Mount Pleasant Street take a, an initial look at it. Uh, we'll probably have them proceed with taking a further look at Central Street Bridge. It may involve some, some guttering, um, to what extent, I don't know what that is, but their biggest belief is that water displacement is causing a lot of the erosion problems. But-
From the initial discussion, we were talking about some, some foundation issues at each intersection, each quadrant, or potentially at each quadrant.
At the abutments.
At the abutments, so, um, it's more than just a, a, a single repair, this is an overall evaluation, and making sure that we do something that makes sense for the long-term integrity of the bridge.
Given the age of it, it's-
Yeah.
Fifteen, twenty years old.
Not that there are any issues with it now, there aren't, but we know that, we wanna make sure that we make a-
Oh.
Make a repair.
And don't wanna cause mass hysteria. There's nothing wrong, there's just a noticeable issue with the wing walls, which aren't structural, but wanna make sure that it's corrected before it does cause any problem.
Because it will become structural if we don't do something.
Thank you for catching me on that.
Or me. I have a way of saying things that gets me in trouble. I noticed that earlier today. And I don't know that I had anything else. Did you have anything else?
Uh, be looking for some snowplows at the holiday party, or the parade. Be all lit up.
What about the North Street, North and Fourth Street corner? Have you done anything on that?
We, we completed Borings last week.
They did?
Geotechnical, which is Klinger, uh, Brian Boss will be, Ross will be taking a look at it, and more than likely, it'll be a retaining wall. Um, that'll be hired out, just given the complexity of that area, so, that should be coming forward in the next month or so, hopefully, by the time the design work's done.
Thank you.
Yep.
Couple other things. Uh, Tri-State Conference I went to last Friday. Um, that's a, the Ch- the Chamber Alliance is invol- well, the Chamber is involved in that, but it's, it's, this is put together and has been done over the last little over a decade. Where the three states come together and, and talk about primarily transportation issues. And one of the things I had mentioned to you, sent, sent some information regards to the future of transportation. Both Illinois and Iowa hit fairly heavily on the change that we'll see coming, or that they see coming down with automated vehicles. Iowa is involved in a pilot project that they're looking to start doing some testing of autonomous vehicles in the Iowa City Corridor over the next few years. Uh, just, uh, some interesting changes of what's gonna, what will happen as time goes on, and it's hard to know how fast that will happen, but it'll be faster than what we're really ready for. Uh, the, all the changes that come with automated vehicles. And, final point, Fireball Run. Uh, the Chamber was here, Chelsea was here a month or so ago, talking about us being in the running for that. We are gonna be one of the communities that will be doing that next September. So, uh, this, next week, I know our staff will be heavily involved. Uh, the Chamber will be very involved in, uh, doing some coordinating activities to do, that's, that need to be done in advance and get prepared for next year. And that, next September, we'll be here sooner than we know it, but, uh, pretty, will be a pretty neat event, and I don't, I've never heard of Fireball Run, and when you look at the audiences that it plays to, I realize since it's on, uh, primarily on, uh, internet-based platforms, web-based platforms, I don't get that stuff. But it will have a huge impact on us next year, so.
They have people coming in pretty soon to-
Next week, we're gonna be doing some initial discussions on that, so, um, I'll, I guess total viewership last year was two point three, was over two point three million people. Uh, they talk about publicity value, last year was fifty-six million dollars. So it's, it is a big deal. We get to showcase us as a community.
Yep.
So that's a neat thing to celebrate. And I would also, I'm sorry, one final thing, just point out. All of our groups put an awful lot of time into doing things and leveraging resources where they can, and I gotta just say, put out commendations to Eric and his group with the event, the cleanup event here in a couple of weeks. They know we have a credit to use, it's, that's not used, and they have done their best, level-headed best, to come up with new ways to use it, and try to stay a step ahead of Des Moines County solid waste. Uh, in, in what's acceptable, um, in using that, and trying to be a benefit to our community, so.
Good.
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Uh, just wanna say before we close out, uh, Burlington, don't give up on Burlington, it's still a great place to live, work, and play. Rob Sussman got married in this town. I also just wanna close out by saying we're gonna build a flood wall, and we're gonna make Illinois pay for it.
Your Honor, I move that we adjourn before more nonsense comes forward.
Second.
Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Miss May's adjourned. Thank you very much. Good luck to everybody.
Thank you, Councilor.